Next door, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move we accept the consent agenda.
I have motion to accept consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Stratton, any discussion? I had one question, and I think I know the answer by one clarification since I've been brought to task for this. There was a, on the ledger, there's an amount of roughly $458,000. Mark Dwyer, 2019, 2020 pilot, and then DI, I think goes on to something else. I assume that was the taxes that were in dispute.
Mr. Craig, do you want to answer that?
Yes, that was a portion of the taxes for the 2019 and 2020 years for the Oida property. We sent that on to Jackson County for dispersment among the other taxing jurisdictions, and they will be making that dispersment. We had been, it was paid last year, and we were working through some of the final legal documents with our bond counsel, and worked with Jackson County throughout January and February. If you know, they collect most of their taxes at the end and the beginning of this year. So the timing for February worked a little bit better with their schedule as well. So, yes, that did deal with the Oida, and it was sent on to Jackson County.
But have they been completely resolved now?
The money has been paid. I would need, I believe, the, a document has been recorded with the Jackson County for the property to go back on the tax rolls this year. I believe there is still one item that our bond counsel is working on, and I would have to get an update from him. It's been, I believe, about a month since I've spoken with him about it.
All right, thank you very much.
It is going back on the tax rolls, and everything has, for the most part, been taken care of.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying no. Motion carries six zero. Next item, previous business seeing none. Next item, new business seeing none. Presentation seeing none. Public hearing seeing none. We'll move on to resolutions. First resolution, R twenty-one dash fourteen is resolution, authorizing the city administrator to purchase a cold planer attachment for the road maintenance and repair.
Mayor, I move we accept resolution twenty-four, or twenty-one dash fourteen.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, if you remember back to budget time, this is one of the items that we brought before you. And this is an attachment that will allow us help with road repair. So basically, it's a 24-inch wide mill that will, as we do any kind of asphalt repair, this is what we use to mill to get down, or we can put new surface on. The current one we have is 18 inches, this one's going to be 24. We actually kept the last one longer than we were supposed to do our replacement schedule. But this will be much needed as we continue to try to put resources towards road maintenance.
Ken, are we keeping the old one or trading it in?
Mark, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. We typically surplus the old one. We put it out for, we use a company called Purple Wave and put it out for auction. We determine what that value is based on the, using other value for similar equipment, and determine if it's a good value for sale, and then sell it.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if we kept it for backup or what.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Next item, resolution R twenty-one dash fifteen. Resolution, authorizing the city administrator to execute a task agreement with number two, with Lamp Reinerson Engineering and Design of the old water main replacement. Old forty water main replacement, sorry.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution R twenty-one fifteen.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley, any discussion?
Mr. Trozen, do you want to give a brief overview of the project?
Sure. So this would be actually hiring our on-call engineering services. You approved the extension of their agreement at the last Board of Aldermen meeting. This is proceeding with hiring them to do the design work for the replacement of the water main. This would be from Main Street to the Snibar Creek along Old Forty Highway. If you recall, this is a water main that we've had several breaks. In fact, I've been with the city less than two years. There's been at least six breaks along this water main. So this has given our public works department a lot of headaches over just that short period of time. And so we not only have the design budgeted in the 2021 budget, but we also have the construction of the water main also budgeted in the 2021 budget.
Mark, is that water line on the north side or the south side of Eagle Parkway?
It's on the north side of Old Forty Highway. So we're east of Main Street.
Okay.
Heading towards, heading towards Jackson County's public works facility.
Okay. I was thinking Snibar Road, I'm sorry.
Is that the break we had over the weekend?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
No further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Next item, resolution R twenty-one dash sixteen. Authorizing the city administrator to purchase a 10-foot stainless steel salt spreader for use of public works to maintain clear roadways.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty-one dash sixteen.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Knox, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this was also a budgeted item. This would be a replacement of one of the 10-foot salt spreaders that we use. It's at its replacement cycle, and anyone that has done anything with salt or any of the chemicals that are used during the winter know the extreme abuse they take, and this is one that is at that point. And this will be off of a state bid, so it was a competitively bid purchase.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries six zero. Next item, resolution R twenty-one dash seventeen. Alderman, this is to enter into a lease agreement with the City of Green Valley Assistance Council.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty-one seventeen.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Knox, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, the agreement hasn't really changed with GBAC for the Greg Street building. What this will do is require them to have personal property insurance, which was not included in the original, but all of the terms are still the same.
Do they carry a renter's insurance on the building itself, or do we just provide that?
No. So the actual shell of the building is covered by us. It's, it's one of our properties. This is requiring them to have, for all intents and purposes, renter's insurance for contents.
For their properties, yes. No further, just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will that also cover liability? If somebody falls and gets hurt, it's on them and not us?
I mean, this, this particular one is just the personal property insurance. I don't believe there's anything in here that necessarily covers that. And I don't know, Teresa, do you know right off if we're listed as an insurer, another insured on theirs?
I don't know, but I will say that the reason we're adding this addendum to it is because we had Lobby's firm look over what we had been previously working on, and this was their only suggestion to come back and make a change too, so.
Okay, great, thank you. I believe I saw in the original agreement that they're required to provide liability. Isn't that correct, Ms. Lobb?
You're muted there.
I, I don't have it directly in front of me. I do believe that that is correct.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Next item, resolution R twenty-one dash eighteen. Resolution by the Board of Aldermen in City of Green Valley to establish the need for amendment of the 2021 budget.
Mayor, I move that we accept resolution number R twenty-one dash eighteen.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this is something that some of you have kind of become accustomed to at the start of a new calendar year. As we wind down a calendar year, we have projects that are outgoing or ongoing that we think are going to be finished, or we have things on order that we think are going to come in in that calendar year, and then inevitably do the backorder, or whether the projects don't come in, or the products aren't delivered. So that, for the next calendar year, we make a budget adjustment that takes those funds that were already allocated in the previous year and pulls those back out of reserves to make that purchase or to finish payment for that project. So that is the example here. So this will include the general fund, park fund, water sewer transportation.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. I'm sorry, did someone say something there? Next item, business ordinances. First item, ordinance B twenty-one dash zero-two.
This is an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a vehicle tow yard.
Mayor, I move that we accept the second reading of bill number B twenty-one dash dash zero-two and approve it as ordinance number two-five-three-eight.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second, Alderman Knox, any discussion?
Where's the sand?
Sorry, Ms. Totten?
I was wondering where this tow yard is.
This is cus, this is Custom Cruisers Lot.
Okay. Thank you.
No further discussion, roll call, please. We're not hearing you, Jamie.
Sorry, Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
No.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Knox? Alderman Stratton? Alderman Totten? Five-one.
Next order of business, ordinance B twenty-one dash zero-three.
This is an ordinance amending the conditional use permit approved in ordinance two-four-four-eight for the Eagle Convenience Storage LLC.
Alderman Cleaver?
You're muted.
Mayor, I move that we accept the second reading of bill number B twenty-one dash oh-three and approve it as ordinance number two-five-three-nine.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second, Alderman Totten? Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items. So after last week's meeting and subsequent approval of the first reading of this item, I had a few reservations in approving it again for the second reading. So I reached out and had a few conversations with a couple of different people over the course of the last couple of weeks. One of those people was Mr. Reisinger, who's on the call tonight. One of the, one of the concerns that I had was a concern brought up by Mr. Murphy over the course of last week, and that was a concern that he had, he had had other applicants submit plans or submit permits, change requests for using the same type of aluminum or metal tin building material within 300 feet of a roadway that he had had to reject in the past on multiple occasions. I had some reservations approving Mr. Reisinger's asking to use that in the same sense within the 300-feet period of a, of a public roadway, when I didn't see that there was any clear difference between his request and other requests by other citizens that Mr. Murphy had to reject in the past. So I had a conversation with Mr. Reisinger as to what other options were available on the table. I asked him if he could look into possibly stuccoing the entire side of that wall for two reasons. One, concerning the metal building item that I just brought up, but also because he had mentioned that the stone or the brick was the most, most expensive portion of material and labor costs that he would have to incur on top of what he had already had planned. So to me, it didn't really make sense to keep that portion of the wall construction in the revised design if it was the most expensive portion. So Mr. Reisinger did look into that and stuccoing the entire wall instead of having the lower portion brick and the upper portion metal like we had approved last week. He did say that he could do that and stuccoing the entire side of the wall and would work with the city to move forward with that. So I would like, I would like to make a change recommendation to alter the second reading for making the entire side of, of that, those walls stucco and removing the metal building portion of material.
Mr. Lobb, do we need a motion for that amendment?
Oh, yeah, it sounds to me like Alderman Bass just made a motion to amend the ordinance that's pending before the board. So which, you know, the board can do, you can, you know, you've seen this at the federal and the state level where legislation is introduced, and then throughout the process, it may be amended or changed, and that's no different than what we're doing here. The being the case is Alderman Bass has kind of indicated his interest in seeing an amendment to the ordinance. So he has offered a motion to make that amendment. In order for that to occur, someone would need to second that motion. There would be a vote by the board to determine whether to amend the ordinance in that way, and then you could conclude with approving the ordinance as amended if that, and the initial motion is adopted.
I don't believe Mr. Bass actually said as a motion. Does he need to actually use that phrasing in it?
Alderman Bass, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to amend the second reading.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Bass.
It's not an emotion to amend the second meeting, reading, it's a motion to amend the ordinance that is before the board at this point.
It would be a motion to amend condition number three in the ordinance that would then be buildings nine and 10 will have, the exterior walls will be stucco.
Does that mean no, no stone, no brick? Is that what you're saying? Just be all stucco?
Right now, it would have been that rock, like the first, I don't know what, four or five feet, and then and then metal above that.
Yes. So now we're looking at, what you're saying is just all stucco.
I, I, I think you're going into the discussion rather than the motion. Let's, let's get the motion out there and get a second, then we'll go into discussion.
Yes, I would like to make a motion.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to amend the ordinance to allow stucco on buildings nine and 10. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Knox, now any discussion?
Yeah, so does that mean, Shay, when you were talking, that's just goes to all stucco and no, no stone, no rock, whatever was originally going to be on there?
Yeah, that was the latest conversation that I had with Mr. Reisinger, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And he's willing to do that, and does that concur with staff?
Well, if you, to go, just to give a little background, it has been a couple of weeks. The original conditional use permit that was approved stated that anything visible within 300 feet would be that rock along the bottom and then stucco everywhere else. And then I believe the request from the applicant was to just do metal panels, and planning and zoning commission ended with the rock along the bottom sill and then metal panels above that. Is that correct, Mr. Trozen?
Bass's recommendation to the plan commission was no change from the original conditional use permit, as you stated. So that, meaning no change, would be that the construction of phase two would be the same construction that occurred in phase one, as Ken just explained. The stone on the lower half, the lap, lap siding on the upper half. And as Ken just explained, that was then changed by the plan commission to what is before you today in the ordinance, item number three.
Any discussion? Now we need a motion, a vote on the amendment, Mr. Lobb?
Correct.
And is that, is that a roll call, or is that just a?
No, that's just a voice vote.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the amendment to the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
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 By saying nay? Motion carries?
Did everyone vote?
I'm just wanting to know how, how much difference is this that we're doing going to affect the owner?
Mr. Reisinger, would you care to address that?
I actually have a question about what we are, are we amending it to approve the stucco on the south-facing wall that faces Eagles, Eagles Parkway? Is that what we're voting to do at this point?
My understanding is where you were supposed to put the rock and steel, you're going to be allowed to replace it with all stucco.
Okay.
Is that correct? Is that your motion, Mr. Bass? Alderman Bass, sorry?
Yes, yes, it was. I'm sorry, yes, it was.
Okay. Okay, I just, I wasn't sure if we were reverting back to something else, though. That, that's okay with me. I want to work with the city and, and, you know, I, I'm just kind of looking at some options there with this being a second-tier property. I just wanted to have a conversation and, and another look at this, and I'm, I'm perfectly fine with finishing that in stucco, and it'll look good, and, and I'm, I'm good with that if you guys are.
Is that to answer your question, Alderman Totten?
Yes. I just wanted to be sure they had a vote in it.
Okay, then let's go back to the vote again. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, please signify by saying nay. All right, motion to amend carries six zero. Now back to the original motion, any further discussion? No further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Bass?
Sorry, I'd like to clarify, we're voting on the second read as it is stated on the agenda, so I would be voting no. Um, is that correct?
This is as amended.
As amended.
This is as amended.
Okay.
So the ordinance, it doesn't change the, the title, it doesn't change the subject matter, it just changed one of the segments of the ordinance. So this is, this motion is essentially as amended due to the action that the board took just immediately. While this motion was pending, we took side action, and now we're back to the original motion to adopt the ordinance.
Understood. My vote is yes.
Okay, Alderman Cleaver?
Just a second, we need to go back. Did, did you approve your vote, then, Alderman Bass?
He said yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Alderman Headley?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, Alderman Knox? Alderman Stratton? Alderman Totten?
Six zero, that's approved.
Thank you very much, guys. Enjoy the weather tomorrow.
Next order of business, ordinance B twenty-one dash zero-four.
This is an ordinance by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to amend the 2021 budget to allocate funding from general park, or general fund, park fund, and water sewer transportation fund reserves for the completion of the 2020 capital projects.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading of bill twenty-one dash oh-four and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second by Alderman Totten, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this is the budget amendment that was brought up in the resolution. So the things that we would be, that we're still looking at, that we need to do this for is the F-550 dump truck for public works, which went through the approval process last year but was backordered. Park trail projects that didn't get completed. Some of the N-code upgrades that they weren't able to get in place. And the board chamber audiovisual equipment that also did not get in place before the end of the year. So this ordinance would take those funds that were allocated last year and move it forward. The other thing I would like to ask, because this was, these were all items that were previously approved. If we did do two reads tonight, that would allow payment as soon as the items were completed.
Okay. You'd mentioned the F-550, is that a separate one from last year, from the one we just voted on last week, last meeting? Or is that the same one? Didn't we vote on the F-550 last week, or last meeting?
No, we did police cars at the last meeting. The 550 would have come to you in 2020 for approval. Gosh. Mr. Trozen? March, or?
I must just confuse that with, with reading the agenda itself.
Yeah, it was quite a while, and it just continued to get backordered. It was actually approved by the board in February of 2020, so we are a year backordered.
That is correct. We, we have an expected delivery. We, we have an expected delivery by the mid-March. And that's a firm, firm date by the vendor.
Any further discussion? Let's vote on this for the first read and then we'll bring it, see vote, see if there's any opposition to the second read. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Mr. Murphy had brought up, they want to bring this back up for a second read, is there any objection? Seeing none. Next item, item B twenty one dash zero four for second read.
This is an ordinance by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to amend the twenty twenty one budget to allocate funding from the general fund, park fund, water sewer transportation fund reserves for the completion of the twenty twenty capital projects.
Jamie, what ordinance is that, what number?
This one would be two five four zero.
Thank you. Mayor, I move we accept the second reading of bill twenty one dash oh four and approve it as ordinance two five four zero.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Second, Alderman Totten, any discussion? Roll call please.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Knox?
Yes.
Alderman Stratton?
Yes.
Alderman Cotton?
Yes.
I have no report this evening, Mayor.
Next item, city administrator and staff report?
Uh, Mayor, members of the board, Ms. Ozenbaugh has a report.
Mayor, members of the board, I believe last week, Mr. Murphy emailed out the final copy of the strategic plan to everyone. And if you'll recall, part of that strategic plan was that we would work on increasing communication with our citizens, and so with that being said, we have our first, what we expect to be a minimum of quarterly newsletter going out, it's scheduled to go out on Wednesday of this week, and so our newsletter list is, is still a little small, but we're expecting that getting started, we just kind of promoted that in the last month or so, but didn't want to make people who are on the list wait to start receiving communications, so we're going to go ahead and move forward with the first one, so encourage people, you know, to get signed up on that. And we'll use it for newsletters, we'll use it for event notifications and other things as we go. But that is going to start on Wednesday of this week.
Teresa, how do they sign up to get on that?
So if you send someone just right to our website, I believe it's at the middle or bottom of the page, it just says sign up for for emails, it's at the, towards the bottom, kind of in the middle of the page, under connect with city government, and then it will automatically put them on our list.
Thank you.
Have we posted that on our webpage?
Yeah, so it's been on, it's on the webpage permanently, and then we've had at least one or two social media posts about it, we'll continue to keep pushing that, but my hope is once the newsletter goes out, people will start talking about it or hearing things and passing it along, and we'll just organically grow the list from there as well.
Do we address it, any of our monthly statements that go out?
Uh, well, it will be in this, the city view, so that.
I meant in, I meant in water bills or any of that nature?
Um, I'm not sure if that particular feature has been on the water bills yet, we've obviously talked about the new website and the new app, but that's something we can look at for sure.
Thank you.
Have we addressed the, the newsletter going out to people that do not have email?
Um, at this time, it's strictly an e-communication. I'm not sure, we haven't really talked about it, about pushing it out in any other ways or the cost that would be involved with that. But our hope is that we can see the open rates and we'll see how that's going, and then if we need to look at Plan B, we can kind of talk through that as well, but the plan right now is to, to work to get this list growing and work through it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Teresa, can I get some of that information to send to the ones on my Main Street that are new? I've got quite a few new people down there now.
So you want the information on how to sign up, or?
Yeah, just give me that, so, and a copy of whatever you said before, so I can show it to them.
Okay, we can get that to you.
Yep, and that information will be out in city view, which should be not too much longer, it'll be showing up in mailboxes. And that was all the comments that we had, Mayor.
Okay. Next item, Board of Aldermen, reports and comments, Alderman Bass?
I have nothing at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Cleaver?
Uh, I just want to say congratulations to all the anniversaries, Teresa, Bill, Chief Bill, and Shannon. Thank you for your continued service and longevity with the city. That's it, Mayor.
Alderman Headley?
Nothing major, just wanted to comment on just appreciate the, the police department and all the public works that had to suffer through that bitter cold spell. I can't imagine having to work outside in, in those conditions, so you know, just let everyone know the effort and, and the, I'm, I'm sure suffering in some cases was appreciated in you know, dealing with, dealing with the cold, so.
Alderman Knox? You're mute.
He's on mute, Rick.
Thank you, double clicked.
Why is he doing that? All right, I'm gonna try this a third time, I just want to echo what Alderman Cleaver and Alderman Headley said with our city crews and longevity anniversaries.
Alderman Stratton?
I would echo the same thing, thank you to all of you.
Nancy?
Oh, I'd like to say thank you. I read a little article in one of the papers, I didn't like it, now I'm glad to show you all, because they acted like our city people aren't the best, and I hate to tell you this, we have some good people here. Mark it so you can see it. It's in that little paper that comes, they make. But nothing at this time other than to say thank you all for all your long hours and all your hard work, keep it up. Shannon, congratulations on the longevity.
Okay, Mayor's report, I also want to echo everyone's thanks. Our Public Works Department went well above and beyond in, in taking care of the problems we had over extreme cold spell. And, and I think they're doing a great job and, and congratulations everybody on your anniversaries. I don't believe there's a need for an executive session.
No.
Nope.
That being said, meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.